Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 17 City of Fraser Regular Planning Commission Meeting. Please place any cell phones or other devices on, turn them off, or do not disrupt. And if you would please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item two is the roll call. Ms. Greenia?
Chair Zarniki?
Here.
Mr. Farina?
Here.
Mr. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
I'm present. Thank you, Ms. Greenia. Agenda item three is approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Commissioner Farina?
Under old business, I'd like to add two things. Follow up on the explanation we were getting from the attorney on landscaping. That's for the Dairy Queen. And then, in general, a follow-up on issues brought up at previous meetings that seem to be falling through the crack all the time, and we don't get updated on them. So I would like that added, please.
And you want it under old business, unfinished business?
Unfinished.
Unfinished, so under seven. So it would be seven A and seven B?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on those two items? Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as modified.
As modified and support?
Yes.
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Kyle to adopt, approve the agenda as revised, although, let's do a roll call, Ms. Greenia.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Chair Zarniki?
Yes.
Mr. Farina?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Agenda item four are my opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted online and has been printed for you here and is available at the entrance to the room. It's important to let everybody know that the Planning Commission is created by state law. The commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by City Council. The role of the Planning Commission is to plan and promote the efficient, coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or to allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the Planning Commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the requests and whether all of the standards and the zoning ordinance have been met. The Planning Commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals seated here this evening are our representative, our legal representative from Orai Ransilio, PC, Don Denault, and our planner, our city planner, Alicia Warren, and our city clerk, Cindy Greenia. We have no public hearings on the agenda tonight, so I will skip the wording on that. And we will go to Agenda Item Five, Approval of the Minutes, June 7, 2023. Any discussion on the draft minutes?
None.
None? I have one. I have one on page four. The B Site Plan 2208-3174 Utica. It should read 31475 Utica. Our resolution does state 31475, but it's just the caption that needs to be changed. And any further comments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as revised.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 7th meeting as it, as the changes.
I'll support.
Okay. It's moved by Commissioner Kyle and support by Commissioner Warren to approve the June 7 minutes as amended. Ms. Greenia, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Chair Zarniki?
Yes.
Mr. Farina?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Agenda item six, new business, public notices, there are none. Six B is site plan, site plan review, 23-0231401, gross spec, Popeye's Site Plan Amendment. Ms. Warren, do you have a report for us?
Yeah. Now, the applicant is not here tonight. Would you still like me to read the report and hold a discussion on it?
Do you have your mic, because I did not hear you?
Yes. With the applicant not present tonight, would you still like me to read the report and hold a discussion on it?
Do you know why the applicants aren't here? Were you expecting the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Both the applicant and their architect, but...
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, what?
Would it be better to just postpone?
Can we, to postpone the item or wait to see if they show up late? I'm not sure how...
Yeah, that's fine. Go into the next item and come back to that.
Is that okay, Mr. Denault, to kind of postpone this item to, after we go through Agenda Item C, the sign ordinance?
Sure, Chair's discretion, if you'd like to pass on this and come back to it.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, Chair's discretion, I think.
Okay, we will go to, we will see if the applicant shows up within the next couple of minutes, and then we can entertain that item. We'll go to Agenda Item Six, C, Updated Sign Ordinance. Mr. Denault?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We are popping in a PowerPoint presentation that I've also printed for all of you. It is in front of you, just to make it a little easier to see, but we thought it'd be good to put it on the screen as well, just in case anybody wanted to see it in vivid color, going to Fraser, yep, right there, perfect. All right. So as you, most of you probably are aware, we have been, and when I say "we," city planners took the first sort of pass at working on updating the city's sign ordinance. You are number two. I don't know, is there anything I can click? I feel bad asking, so, if you're good. And just to give you some background and give you a little education, I don't know how much you want from me on education. It could be a whole seminar. I mean, we could talk for a couple of hours on sign regulations and the legalities of it. But as a team, you know, the city planning department or planning office is well-versed in sort of what looks, works for cities from a planning perspective in terms of signs, commercial signs, temporary signs, sign permitting process, temporary signage. And then, the legal side has to look at it from what the courts have said we can and cannot do. So this update, which I don't think I've ever presented to all of you, because it happened when I wasn't back here working with the city yet, this happened back in 2015, the Supreme Court ruled, and we'll get to that in a minute, about a sign ordinance that was unconstitutional and kind of gave us some explanations as to why. So this slide here that you're looking at, I borrowed this from the city of Detroit. I thought it was pretty appropriate for what we're talking about tonight. This is the challenge that all communities face throughout the country. This isn't a Michigan thing or a Com County thing. You have to balance all of those different considerations. You've got constitutional limitations. How do you preserve architectural things and neighborhood aesthetics? How do you protect public safety and the interests of residents and community groups that maybe have been accustomed for 100 years to doing things their way? How do you prevent the proliferation of too much signage? Obviously, we all think of that during election season, right? And if you're, any of you are driving through the city of Warren lately, it's already happening. So how do you deal with that and address that? What do we do with advances in signage technology? The last time the city's ordinance was updated was in 2010, and I didn't look to see what the city attorney wrote or did at that time, but it's been 13 years just since we did an update. So what's changed since then? Interest in business promotion, right? We want to support our businesses as a community, but we also have to find a balance between that and what becomes blight. How do we promote local commerce? What's involved in that? You know, is it temporary signage? Is it grand opening signage? And then, property rights, right? Building and landowners, many will say, "This is my property. I should be able to do with it what I want." So how do we balance that? How do we balance the governmental regulation versus property rights of building and landowners? So in 2015, the famous case of Reed versus Gilbert was issued by the U.S. Supreme Court. As you may note, by the date of June 18th, they always release the controversial ones in June, and then they take the summer off to get away from all the controversy. So that's what they did here. And I don't know why the PowerPoint is blocking out a little bit of the content, but unfortunately, my pictures went too high, it looks like. But anyway, the gist of this is, they issued a ruling that affects pretty much every municipality, every sign ordinance everywhere, and basically held it under the First Amendment. If the government regulates content, it needs to prove a very compelling governmental interest. So if any of you have heard any of these buzz phrases in the legal world on signs and First Amendment rights, compelling governmental interest, and then narrowly tailored as much as possible to achieve that interest without unnecessarily suppressing additional expression, narrowly tailored and compelling interest, those are tough standards. Those are the highest level of review standards when it comes to regulating what people say and what people express. In this particular case, those two signs you see there were regulated by the town of Gilbert in Arizona. Their regulations on the books at the time, they treated political signs, ideological signs, religious signs, commercial signs, everything differently based on the content of the message that they conveyed. They weren't dealing with what they're made out of or where they go. They actually had different regulations based on what kind of message you were trying to express, and that is what got them into trouble and ended up at the U.S. Supreme Court. The church was cited in that case for posting temporary directional signs. You can see them there. They have little arrows on them, right? Every Saturday morning, they would put these up. And that was one of three categories of signs that was defined in the ordinance and regulated with special rules. They were up too long, and they got cited for failing to include an event date on the signs, so they made them too generic. The church lost at the district level and on appeal, so they lost twice, but they got to the U.S. Supreme Court, and the church won. This just sort of gives you a summary. The overall conclusion was unanimous that the ordinance was unconstitutional, but it was a little more split in terms of why. So it was six justices in the majority, three of those adopted their own analysis, which makes it even more complicated, and then the other three supported the separate three, but wrote two separate opinions about those three. Based on how we all in the municipal world and legal world tied that all together, most of us agree the general rule is this: If you need to read the sign to figure out how the ordinances apply to it, the ordinances will probably be unconstitutional unless the city can prove the strongest governmental interest for discriminating based on message, and then show that the ordinances are as nearly written as possible to accomplish those governmental interests. But again, because there were all these different supporting opinions and a little bit of fracture, most of us also believe that some kinds of message-based regulations are still constitutional. There have been cases that have come out since 2015 that support that interpretation. For example, at least six of the justices would support regulations that relate to something happening on the site or off the site, right? It's not about the message, it's about, you're putting it on your property and talking about off-site things that are happening versus things that are happening here. That's not specific to the content, that's more about regulating function, you know, what it is the sign is designed to do. The function-based category rather than content-based category is sort of what we focus on now when we're writing these ordinances and updating them. Next one? So I've already explained the six to three and the nine to zero. The possible function-based exceptions can include things like onsite or offsite, temporary activities versus permanent things, governmental messages for public safety, which is the one you can't see under that picture there, but it did show up on the printout just fine. Next slide? These are some visual examples of the types of signs a city can probably still regulate in different ways because they have a different function, right? Warning signs about hazards, signs directing traffic, addresses, temporary versus permanent, offsite versus onsite. Those are not based on the message you are trying to convey, they're based on the function that the sign serves. This particular slide here is a bunch of different non-commercial signs. Some are political, some are directional, some are ideological, some are informational, some are activity-based, some are safety-related. The court's opinion tells us in general that without an extremely strong governmental interest, we can't treat any of these differently based on the type of message they're conveying. But we can still regulate what they're made of, how big they are, how they're lit, where they're installed, whether they have moving parts, whether they're portable, whether they're permanent. And those rules can differ also based on zoning and based on the type of property involved. So the important thing for all of us to remember as we go through this is, the rules will generally need to be the same for all types of messages, unless the distinctions are function-based, not content-based. Next one? Oh, that's the next one? I thought it was already, oh, you're right, grand opening. The court did not discuss commercial signage, so on this slide here, you'll see a bunch of, you know, commercial-type things that the businesses might put up. And historically, the court has eased the rules for commercial messages. They have less First Amendment protection because they're based in commerce than they are expression or traditional expression. So we don't think we're going to need to make too many changes in the commercial signage area of the city, other than perhaps to talk about updates, you know, things we want to do differently or better for what we already have on the books. Next one? So what does all this mean for our ordinance? Well, we can still regulate signs, just a matter of how they're regulated. And like I said, commercial industrial signage, probably not going to be impacted too significantly other than maybe our process and maybe some tweaks that we think are important based on what we've seen over the last decade or so. I think, in my opinion, we'll do some more things with temporary signage, but ultimately, it's going to come down to some recommendations and ideas, and then maybe some discussion in terms of what all of you think might be worth recommending to City Council. Next one? In my opinion, revisions are going to focus on location, appearance, number, size, et cetera, not what the sign says or the message it conveys. The city's preferences in terms of sign quality and sign materials can be bolstered with some updates and amendments, and we obviously should not be permitting signs in the road right-of-way. I think we can tighten that up quite a bit in Fraser. I don't think we have a lot on our books about what to do when people put signs in the right-of-way, but it'd be nice to have it on the books that our code people could just go take them out of the right-of-way when they're there. I think we can anyway, but it's always nice to have it in writing so that people can't plead ignorance on that one. We may do some revision on how the city currently processes approvals and enforcement. Things like online sign registration, that's, you know, technologically advanced, and not many cities are doing it too much yet, but it's out there, it's an option, right? Especially when we're talking about temporary signage. One of the things we're going to talk about is, when you think of a political sign, when you think of a graduation sign or some kind of temporary message on somebody's front lawn, how on earth can a city regulate or track that, right? They don't know when it went in, and they don't know how long it's been there, and they don't know if the purpose has been fulfilled necessarily unless it's an election. So there are things that we can talk about in terms of, how do we help code enforcement with that, or do we need to? You know, maybe it's not a problem in Fraser, and we're not that worried about it. Maybe people are putting up political signs appropriately and taking them down appropriately, and we don't have any major issues. But if we are looking at or considering, and we'll talk more about that, some kind of timeframe that we want to actually be able to track and measure, online might be the way to go, just because people have to put in a date, right, in terms of when they want to start it, and then that starts the clock for when they have to take it down. All right. So content-neutral criteria, as you can see here, regulating the size, locations, lighted versus unlighted, fixed messages or messages that change, private property versus public property, commercial property versus residential property, on-premises and off-premises signs. Those phrases are very legal. On-premises just means it's a sign about what you do on your site, or it's got something related, you know, it's related to what you're doing at your property. Off-premises signs are what we call billboards, right? That's the word everybody knows. If it's a sign on your property that's not about your property, it's basically a billboard. We just don't think of it because it's not huge and gigantic on the freeway as a billboard, so that's why we use the phrase "off-premises signs." And then, rules regarding time restrictions, especially on signs that advertise one-time events or limited-time events. Other things I think we need to think about, and this is probably a good area that we'll want to do a little bit of updating on, electronic message board requirements for size, for brightness, for length of display, how to coordinate with the building department and, you know, identify issues with everyday implementation. How do we identify sign trends as we're looking at writing this? You know, do we want to allow more illumination? Have things changed to that point? More movement on signs? Are we more comfortable, you know, there's that gas station over on Utica, kind of over there by 15, or I think it's Maravian, and I've noticed that sign is very vivid, you know, it changes a lot. It's advertising, it's motion, it's graphics, you know, it's really trying to get you to notice it so you can do your oil change there or get your, you know, car serviced there. So do we approve of or recommend something like that for Fraser? More signs on all sides of buildings, you know, do we want to be a little less restrictive now that we're seeing more outlots being developed? You know, you've got the Meyer property with the Taco Bell, and you've got the Hockey Land with the Big Boy, and, you know, a lot of traditional old ordinances. You get your frontage signs, right? But you don't really get parking lot signage, you don't really get side signs, you don't get all the extra advertising or identifiers because of the way things are written from 10 or more years ago. And then, more integration into building architecture. One of the things I've seen, if you think about that Portillo's restaurant over on Hall Road, they came to the city with, "This is our model." You know, "We put these murals and we put these visual sort of artwork types designs on the side of our buildings. This is what we do." And yet, the ordinances don't really allow for that because they're defined to be signs. They draw attention, they draw visual interest in the building. So what do we do with, you know, integrating imaging and imagery into building architecture? So, for next steps, and we've already, you know, started down this road, but this is sort of an outline of how it works, and it's not an easy lift. We are already drafting new regulations. The planners presented something that I've taken a look at, I've gone through, I've created comments and questions for the planners. We're going to work together as a team to get through that. I have sort of three schools of thought. We could use the planners' draft and then drop in ideas or things that I have liked over the years or changes I think need to be made legally, and then try to figure out what's already in the city's sign ordinance so we don't accidentally start grandfathering too many things. You know, one of the things I think about when a planner writes an ordinance, they're doing it from a planning perspective, and they're doing best practices and borrowing a lot from what they know, but ultimately, you know, our community, it's going to have its own heartbeat, right? It's going to have its own history. And if we start changing things like, "You're only allowed to have 30% of sign face be changeable," but it's always been 40, and I'm just throwing out numbers as examples, we're now grandfathering a whole lot of signs that have the 40, right? Even though the rule is 30. And how does that affect code enforcement? How does that affect building department when they have to try to figure out who's grandfathered and who isn't? So a lot of the detail work is in looking at the different recommendations from planning or even myself, and making sure we're not over-grandfathering things too much. As far as the tax provisions go, you know, obviously, it starts here, once you are all comfortable with recommending, or presumably, you could not recommend, but in theory, we get it to a place where you're comfortable as a recommending body, recommending it to City Council, and then they'll have their own, you know, polish and their own ideas, I'm sure, as well. And maybe hopefully, they'll follow the process along so they're not catching up at the last minute there either. And then, during development of the sign ordinance amendments, I do want to look at the process for sign reviews and approvals, just to make sure everybody's comfortable with it, you know, make sure Alicia's office is comfortable with how we're doing sign reviews and approvals. It seems like we've had a number of, and you know, Frank can attest to some of the zoning board stuff, we've had a number of different requests or confusions about, "Well, I was allowed to have this sign," or "I was told I could have this sign." Nope, you need a variance for this sign. So how do we maybe make that easier for everybody at City Hall when they're looking at sign applications? As I noted, the city's current ordinance was enacted in 1996. Ironically, I was a lawyer then, but just barely, and when it was adopted. And then, it was updated in 2010 when I wasn't part of the city attorneys here for the city at that time. Overall, it is very content-neutral already, I have gone through it. It's kind of, I mean, I gave you a copy of it, it's kind of difficult to navigate, it's not really user-friendly or reader-friendly, but it isn't bad. I mean, it's not terrible as far as the content neutrality part goes. I found some things that we can change, and I certainly think we can have more ideas about what and how to regulate, but overall, it works from a content neutrality perspective. It's not really like the town of Gilbert where it's not discriminating against religious message and political messages and commercial messages, it doesn't do much of that. It is primarily locational, primarily substance in terms of how you build them and keep them, but we can do a lot, I think, to really make that stronger and make it better. The ordinance itself is permissive in nature. What that means is it comes right out and says, "Every sign is prohibited unless we allow it here." They make that, it's made very clear in the draft or the wording of the ordinance itself. And then, it goes through all the kinds that are allowed. It talks about what you need a permit for and what you don't, it talks about different zoning districts, what's allowed and what isn't. But there are places, I think, there that we can break apart and look at the weaknesses in each of those areas. I do think its primary weakness is more modernization than anything else. Technologies, designs, strategies even from businesses have changed a lot since it was written, so those are things we'll want to keep an eye on as we're working through it. So what is the definition of a sign? Well, the city's current ordinance has 24 different types of signs defined, and the next couple of slides, as we go through them, are just actual text from our ordinance. There's many of them we never even use. Like, these definitions kind of got lost when changes were made or drafts were done. And I'm a big proponent of, if you're going to define something, use it, right? Tell people what it means, or when you tell them what it means, use it in the ordinance so when they see it in the ordinance, they can go to a definition and find it. Like, for example, there's a definition of political sign in our ordinance, but the ordinance never talks about political signs, nowhere. So it's really not necessary. And in fact, we're trying to be content-neutral, so why would we even discuss political signs? So the next three slides, slides, we'll just jump through real fast, these are just very small print, but you can see in bold the ones we never, ever, ever use. Advertising sign is never used as a term, construction sign is never used, direction sign is never used, festoon sign is never used, flashing, animated, or moving signs, none of those are used, non-accessory sign is never used, political sign is never used, real estate development sign, residential entranceway sign, roof sign, all of those are never used, vehicle, business, or vehicle sign, never used. So for what it's worth, we can definitely do a lot with cleaning that up. That's in the definitional section, that's a different part of the zoning ordinance than the actual sign ordinance. So now, taking you through, what does our ordinance actually say right now? So this is the residential district. You're only allowed six square feet of temporary non-commercial signage. So one of the first things I would ask, you know, the Planning Commission input on is, is six square feet enough? Right? We're talking about, "Congrats to my grad, my Fraser High grad." We're talking about, "Vote Don for office," right? We're talking about, "I support this cause," or whatever it is, or "VFW is great," you know, whatever it is, six square feet, if you think about it, is, you know, you can get one, you can get six signs that are all one by one, but not many people can see those. You can get two signs, right, that are, what, two by, I don't even know what the math is on that. So six square feet is not a lot of square footage, basically. I mean, if you wanted a three-by-two sign, you're done. That's it. Like, so if you support four candidates in a big election, you're going to have to do it with one square foot signs, and nobody makes those. They really don't exist. So what we have to think about is, six square feet enough when we're talking about temporary non-commercial? As far as the make of it, metal, wood, plastic frame, that's pretty common, that's pretty common. Goes into the ground with no footings, that's very common. Cardboard, paper, plastic, wood, or a combination of those as the face, that's fine. The written permission of the property owner, I'm guessing Cindy's never seen that before, but I'm guessing not a single soul has ever, ever given Cindy a written permission from a property owner to put a sign out, right? It's just never happened. So it's something we can tighten up, it's something we can internally make happen if we want it to happen, but right now, it's on the books and it's not used. Two feet from a sidewalk is a good idea. Typically, the county says one foot from sidewalks and right-of-way, so we have two feet just to give a buffer. Again, are we comfortable with that, or do we want to be consistent with county, you know, general county guidance at one foot? Can't create site distance issues, I think we all can agree on that, right? You don't want anything blocking driveway or intersection visibility. Only allowed for 45 days. How do we track that? So I put up, you know, "Don for City Council" sign in May, and the election's not until November. Are we tracking that? And if we're tracking that, what happens if they take it down for a day and put it back up? Or take it down for half a day and put, you know, how do we track 45 days? It's substance with no teeth. Yes, we can tell our residents that's the rule, but at the end of the day, if somebody wants to play games with the rule, we have no ability to stop that. The temporary non-commercial signs, no illumination, that's probably a good rule for residential. I don't know that anybody would want to change that, I've never really seen anybody light their signage, but there might be a person out there that wants to put, you know, yard decorations, Paula's Garden or something in the front yard, and maybe put a little light on it that points at it to have it glow throughout the night. on it that points at it to have it glow throughout the night. Do we want something like that? Is that okay? Do we change that? Do we deal with that in yard ornamentation versus signage? You know, there's a way to do that. The ordinance also says the city manager may permit ground signs during residential project development as a temporary use. Guessing those don't go through city management. They're probably going to building or planning, but it's on the books that way. Community facility bulletin boards, not quite sure what those are, but they're in the ordinance that are, they're permitted in residential. I'm assuming that's for, like, a senior activity center type of idea, that it's in residential district, but they're putting up a sign to let people know what the community facility is doing or has going on. And they're also allowed to have identification signs, of course. Residential entrance identification signs have specific rules about clear vision, symmetrical appearances, the size. So, that would be for subdivisions, pretty much. You know, you always see in a lot of subdivisions a sign that tells you the name of the sub. And that's about it. That's about it for our residential rules. Then we move into office and neighborhood commercial. Here, we're limiting wall signs to 32 square feet per lot, or 32 square feet for each occupant, which is interesting. So basically, if you have one person or one tenant using the whole site, then they get 32 square feet on the wall. But if you have a strip center of some kind, each of them get 32 square feet. Is that a rule we're comfortable with? Is that a rule we want to keep? Does it make sense if you have a three or four tenant space, for all of them to get the same, that that same space would only get one of if it didn't have tenant spaces? Planning commission, there's this unique rule that we have in our books. Planning commission can increase up to 50% for individual users for every equivalent extra unit. So, if I'm Taco Bell and I take up two of the four individual units at the strip center, I can have, if planning commission approves, I can have an additional 50% of wall signage, so I can go 32 and I can get another 16, because I'm taking up two units instead of one. Or planning commission can do it for every 20 linear feet of storefront, whichever is greater. So that's kind of a unique rule to give people in extra tenant spaces more signage than they would otherwise be allowed as a single tenant. The planning commission can approve a listing of occupants as part of the main identification sign within the limits on the schedule. We'll talk about that schedule later a little bit. But it's called the Schedule of Ground and Pylon Sign Regulations, Part One. There's also a Part Two, different zoning districts is all that really means. They can have a ground and pylon sign in office and neighborhood commercial that conforms to that schedule as well. And then they do allow, in this district, these two districts, direct or low-intensity illumination. The source has to be shielded for public view, and it can't go onto any residential that might be next door. In the community business district, our current limits are, wall sign limited to 32 square feet, but you may use a projecting sign instead, and you may overhang it into the right-of-way, believe it or not, up to 20 square feet on each side of that overhang or that projection with the name of the shop and a very brief description. Well, lawyers don't like words like "very brief description." How on earth are we supposed to interpret that? Obviously, we leave it to the planner's discretion, and when the planner says it's not brief enough, they appeal to the zoning board, and there we are. We're letting the zoning board figure out what "very brief" means in each case. And that may be fine. Maybe we're okay with that. But I'm not necessarily super comfortable with it. It might be better to limit it to a certain number of characters, or words, or imagery, or font sizes. There might be more black and white ways we can deal with that. They have to be of uniform height, and the projection can be up to five feet from the building wall, which is why if the building is close to the right-of-way or a sidewalk, that's why it can project a little bit in. You may combine your wall sign and your projecting sign, up to 32 square feet total, so you don't have to have one or the other if you're in the community business district. Corner locations are allowed to have two of those types of wall signs, two of the same, so not just limited to 32 square feet. They can have two of each. Lighting is only with uniform white lights and must be indirect, not internal, which is interesting. So you can light your wall signs, but it's indirect white light. You can't have them internally illuminated, or your projecting sign can't be internally illuminated either. Onings and canopies are permitted under special land use review, with lettering limited to three inches in height. That is much more black and white for lawyers, you know, to be able, and even planners, I'm sure, to be able to say, we've measured your characters, they're three inches or less, than just saying things like "very brief." Temporary window signs are permitted in this district, up to 15% of the window area in which they are displayed. Those are limited to 30 days. How on earth we enforce or could possibly enforce that? And Randy's smiling at me, because he's probably had to deal with it at some point. Yeah, how do you, okay, you put the beer sign up 30 days ago? How do we know when you put that in? It could be in your window for a year. We'd never know. Subject matter must be truly temporary. Again, that's vague sort of non-lawyer language that makes me uncomfortable. Truly temporary. Is it the summer shandy that the beer company is advertising for the summer? Then if that's the case, that would be more than 30 days. It'd be all summer. So, how do we decide what's truly temporary and how it fits with the 30 days? And then it says banners and similar displays must be approved by the city manager under Temporary Use Section of the zoning ordinance. Obviously, we would probably amend that to city planner, or come up with some process whereby planning or zoning gets some kind of look at it if we're not comfortable with some, beyond certain limits on banners and types of displays like that. General Commercial District has the same standards as Office and Neighborhood Commercial, which was two slides ago, I believe, except, individual lots may have wall signs that cover up to 50% of the wall signable area, or you're limited to 48 square feet if you have a really, really big front wall signable area. Height and area are still regulated by the Schedule of Ground and Pylon Sign Regulations that we'll get to. They may be non-illuminated, or they may be externally illuminated, or they may be internally illuminated. So we're much more generous on illumination in the general commercial zoning district. Your maximum area of ground or pylon signs must be reduced if the lot width is less than 100 feet. So we actually have a formula for your maximum allowable sign area. And on frontages over 200 feet, you can increase it by 1% for every 10 feet of lot width on the principal road, and over 300 feet. So again, we have to talk about, are we comfortable with arbitrary formulas like that? That's a 100-foot difference. If you have a frontage of 199 feet, you can't get that extra 1% of signage. If, you know, if you have 299 feet, that's dramatically different than 200 feet, but yet, you haven't made it to the next threshold. So are we comfortable with that as a planning commission, or as a city council, or as a planner? It's not really a legal issue. It's more of a, just, I've noticed that it's kind of an arbitrary issue. So, how do we make that work for us in terms of formula? This is our industrial district regulations. Permitted principal retail uses have the same standards as office and neighborhood. So if you're in industrial, but you're retail use, you go back to office and neighborhood commercial for your sign rules. Otherwise, in industrial, you only are allowed one freestanding or wall sign. You can only have the name of the establishments or firms and the principal permitted activity on them. The principal permitted activity could be interesting if it's a long phrase, but I guess in theory, it's not too terrible from an ambiguity point of view. You may allow, or we may allow, a directory of tenants to be installed if there are more than one tenant in the building or at the site. The wall sign may not be more than 20% of the building's front wall signable area, or limited to 100 square feet if it's a giant building. Freestanding sign has to meet the Schedule of Ground and Pylon Sign Regulations that we'll get to. You are allowed one bulletin board of up to 16 square feet with the company name, up to six-inch letters, and with jobs available listed below and letters up to four inches. So, basically putting out the word that we're now hiring, I guess. I don't know what the intent was when that was written, but that seems to be the intent behind it, from what I can tell, is it's sort of a, "We have jobs. Come, come talk to us." And it can't be closer than 10 feet from our property line. If the industrial property abuts a state-numbered highway, so think Grossback for a minute, outdoor advertising signs may be permitted. So that's another definition of billboards, essentially. Prevent intense or brilliant beams or rays of light from being directed at the traveled way or adjacent properties. They can't have motion. The illumination cannot change. That would be color. That would be time. They can't exceed 25 feet. They cannot exceed 300 square feet in area. The 25 feet, I think, is the height. Cannot exceed 300 square feet in area for each panel of this billboard slash outdoor advertising sign. They have to be 1,500 feet away from each other, so if somebody gets one first, then the next person's out of luck. May not be within 500 feet of an intersecting street, road, highway, or railroad crossing on the same side of that highway. Can't be within 500 feet of a zoning district boundary. Official and on-premises signs, as defined by the United States Code, I put a question mark there. Apparently, we're referring to federal law on that one, though those won't be counted. So I'm guessing the USC talks about certain kinds of signs or outdoor advertising things that can be on main highways that wouldn't fit here as billboards. And then may not be within 40 feet of the highway right-of-way line in the industrial restricted, may not be within 50 feet in the industrial controlled. And spacing is measured along the nearest edge of the pavement of the highway between points directly opposite each sign. A little bit of technical verbiage, but just to give you an idea of how they are handled, if they're ever handled. You are not allowed to have freestanding accessory signs in the industrial district unless they conform with the Schedule of Ground and Pylon Sign Regulations. So, here's that famous Schedule of Ground and Pylon Sign Regulations I keep saying out loud with every word, just to get it into our heads. This is a chart that kind of tells you, based on moving traffic lanes, what you're allowed to have. Under this chart, you have area, you have height, you have how many traffic lanes, two or four or more. So, not sure what happens with three, but speed limits then. So it's kind of, you follow the left side for speed limits, go across the top for whether you have two moving traffic lanes, or four moving traffic lanes or more. And this will give you how much area and height you're allowed to have for your signage in OSC, N, OR, IR, and IC districts. There's also a little formula underneath that, and then there's a couple of rules. At the bottom, as far as minimum distance of the lead edge, has to follow those two rules. And if you go to the next slide, it's the same, similar, you know, format. We have this Part Two of the schedule. This is strictly for our commercial business district and our CG, Commercial General. Again, moving traffic lanes, you have two, you have four or more, and then you've got your speed limits on the left, and this is what you're allowed to have based on area and height for certain kinds of signs. Again, it's all very confusing. Maybe Alicia would say planners love this stuff, and they're great at formulas, but it's not my thing. So I don't know if there's a way we can make it simpler, easier, probably is, but this is what we have right now for them to navigate through. As far as changeable copy signs, so that's how it's currently referred to. I've also seen the planners refer to it as reader board signs. I think either one is fine. I often equate it, and I probably shouldn't, with electronic message boards, because changeable copy can be the old school, you know, the old church with the letters. You take off the letters, you put on the new letters for the message for that week, right? But more and more, we're seeing less of that, and a lot more electronic message boards. So, here are the rules for changeable copy signs. They're allowed in every district except residential, which is interesting, because what if you're a church? Must be part of a ground or pylon sign, but gas stations can use the canopy. The area of the changeable copy part can't exceed 50% of the entire sign area. Are we good with that? Information has to be limited to events, goods, and/or services on the site, i.e. no billboards, right? If it's electronic, we have a 30-second rule. You can't change messages for, after 30 seconds, and then you can. You can't have moving text. No flashing or scrolling repeatedly or constantly. How do you define repeatedly or constantly if it's intermittent? Electronic message boards have to be off from midnight until 6:00, which is an interesting rule. Some places like to keep them on all night. The LED on the electronic message board has to be at the default settings for brightness and dimming. I'd love to know which code enforcement officer's going to go check the default manufacturer settings and make sure it's set properly. All light must meet city lighting requirements. I think that's a better standard, because then, of course, the brightness can be measured. The owner must allow city to use electronic message board for emergency information. That's pretty common, you know, if you have an electronic message board in any city nowadays. Typically, the city wants you to let them take over if there's an Amber Alert, or there's some other public calamity going on. The owner has to agree to update emergency messages, or stop them as soon as possible after the city manager makes that request. And the owner must keep on file the contact info for all electronic message boards. I don't know who's going to be responsible for keeping up on that. We'll probably get it once, and then we'll never see it again as an update, because no one's thinking about updating it when they change employees and personnel. So ideas for consideration as we keep talking through this. When I wrote another one in a different community nearby, I came up with short-term temporary and long-term temporary. I like the concept of, short-term temporary signs are going to cover things like political signs, graduation signs, congratulatory things, support of a ballot initiative, whereas long-term temporary is really going to cover things like real estate signs. You know, I'm selling my house. I want to put it on a post. So we're going to have different standards for long-term temporary signs. We're going to say it's got to be made out of wood, or a truck, you know, material, or some kind of post material. It's a little stronger, a little more durable, and you're allowed to have it a little bit longer. We should also have probably a category for permanent signs versus mobile signs. One of the things I was, I wrote into the other one is how to deal with vehicles at a business that park right up by the road, so you can see the sign on the side of the vehicle, right? They're getting themselves a free sign. Is that fair to other businesses? Do we want that? Is that blight? Are we comfortable with it? Because it supports our businesses, and it gives them the ability to reach more viewership than their actual sign. Those are things we should consider and discuss, and see if they work for us. Should we have different rules for commercial speech? I think we should, because commercial speech is obviously something we can regulate a little better and a little more, and it has a commercial function to it. Should we retain or add some function-based categories? Agricultural sales, directional signs, residential identification, development signs, public signs, address signs. Some of that we've already covered in our current ordinance, but how can we make it better? And should we get into other categories? And then how do we handle temporary on-premises commercial signs? So, think about the local diner that has Fish Fry Fridays during Lent, right? They want to put up a temporary sign for Lent. Come here for all you can eat fish on Friday nights. How do we handle that? Do we allow it? Do we don't? Do we not? Do we have limitations on it? Do we have a certain way they should be constructed? Should they be a certain message board or sandwich board style? We can control all of that. The question is, do we want to? Do we need to? And what's best for, you know, for our community? So those are some ideas on that page. Additional ideas to think about, obviously, we want to make sure nothing goes in our right-of-way and our easements, and talk about enforcement. We mentioned that. We don't want things on utility poles, right? We don't want things on traffic light poles. We should prohibit all of that. And have the ability to just go take them down, rather than have to give notice and wait and cite people and try to find. The worst part of my life sometimes is trying to figure out, who is Frank's brickpaver, right? He's got Frank's Brick Paving. He's got a phone number. How do I track down Frank? It's not easy. And I think they do that on purpose, so they can't be tracked down. They've learned how to play the game. No permanent signs and required side yard setbacks. That's another concept I'd consider. I think we should consider, although I don't know that it's a problem either, but it's always good to have it covered. Do we pause, this is something we don't have in our community right now. Do we pause the application if the site has unresolved issues, right? If they've got code issues, blight issues, landscaping issues. Should we say that your sign permit's not going to be processed until you fix that stuff? Do we limit signs to two sides of the building?
Did you need something?
Oh, the police department's public safety is like right there. Nobody was there to help you?
Daddy?
You're fine. You're fine. You're okay. You're okay. We'll get somebody over here.
I think they're calling.
I don't know if he paused the recording. We could probably just keep, I don't know if it's running. Yeah, I doubt he paused it, right? Probably still on. Okay. Well, we'll keep, let's keep going, and I don't think, nothing that excited anybody's going to miss at home if they missed a couple of words. So we were talking about other concepts to think about. So, do we limit signs to two sides of buildings? We talked about that earlier. Do we go to three or four? Do we prohibit painted signs on walls? It's something that isn't in our current ordinance. I've seen it in other places. Do we prohibit audio in signage other than menu boards at drive-throughs? Projection of images, odors, or visible matter? Do we want to make sure we prohibit signs that emit smoke, or emit, you know, special effects of some kind? Obsolete signs, always a challenge. How do we deal with obsolete signs, and what's the timeframe for when they become obsolete, and what to do about them? Flags. Flags is a big one. It's really not addressed in our current ordinance. A flag can be a sign, right? Should it be defined as one? Should we have an exception for a certain number of flags? Should they be on a flag pole, or attached to your home on a flag arm? You know, what do we do with flags? Because people will, amazingly enough, try to get around sign ordinances by putting flags up instead. Notice, stick them in the ground. How do we handle light bulbs, strings, and decorations? Always a challenge when you're dealing with Christmas, or Easter, or Halloween decorations, right? In theory, those are signs, especially if they're attracting attention to the property, or if they have words on them. We think of signs as always having to have words. That isn't necessarily true. You'll see two more down. I've got giant 12-foot skeletons, and you're probably thinking, why on earth is that on this list? I am dealing with that right now in another community, because during COVID, I had to research this. I didn't know this. During COVID, it became a very big thing to go to Home Depot and buy a 12-foot skeleton to put up on your front lawn. And when you put up a 12-foot skeleton, what is that? Is it a sign? Is it an ornament? Is it yard decoration? What do we want it to be? What do we want to call that? And how long should they be allowed? And should they be tied to a specific purpose or use? That particular house that I'm thinking of, they'll put a Christmas hat on it for Christmas, and they'll put Easter bunny ears on it for Easter, and they'll put Fourth of July red, white, and blue on for the Fourth of July, and they'll put Halloween for Halloween, right? And they, I don't know if they just love it that much, or if they think they're being cute, or both, but the neighborhood doesn't love it. So, how do you deal with that? Probably should be best to get that covered now. Stationery vehicles in parking lots, we just talked about. You know, where should they be allowed to park their signage on the side of their car, or truck, or van? Should they be allowed to put it right at the edge of the sidewalk and road so everybody can see it, or should we make them go internal onto the site a little bit more? Where do you store everything? Your temporary signs and your displays? Where do you Where do you keep that stuff? Shouldn't be outside, so we should probably define that. And then enforcement, obviously, right? We have to talk about what enforcement looks like. How much notice do we give? What's the process for enforcement? At what point can we just take the sign out? Or can we ever take the sign out? Because we're trespassing at that point. Or do we just write tickets and let it linger? Do we create another process whereby we can get them down quicker than waiting for court? Because court can take forever. We only have three court dates a month. So how do we get that moving quicker? More concepts for residential to consider. Should we lump all of our opinion, political, real estate, and other messages into temporary signage? I think we should. I think that's the right way to do it. Should we not limit the number of signs? Let square footage control? Should we create a combination? You can have 12 square feet, but no more than four. You know, should we have that kind of consideration on our residential properties? Or should we just say you get six square feet, nine square feet, 12 square feet? Go with God and put up as many as you can get for your square footage, right? And if we do that, how does code enforcement deal with it, right? The greatest challenge is now they're one square foot over their limit. Which sign do we pull out? How do we decide? Is it the last one in? How would we know which one that was? Do we arbitrarily pick one? Do we give them notice? Say you've got seven days to pick one and remove it? How do we make the homeowner pick when they're supporting four candidates, but they've got one too many signs? It's a big challenge when we get into numbers and square footage and how we do, what's best for our code people in terms of trying to enforce it and making it clean and simple for them. Should we create a length-to-width design ratio? I did that in the other ordinance I wrote, three-to-one length-to-width. That was primarily designed, again, for political signs when you see the longer ones. Keeping it kind of clean, that there's an actual sort of design method to our madness in terms of how we regulate signage in residential. Should we allow the city planner to have, you know, power to approve agricultural sales? Like brown eggs for sale here, you know, in residential. What would that look like? What are the standards for that? Do we require removal within a certain period of time after the purpose has been fulfilled? A lot of the old days with elections, we always said when the election is over, you've got a certain amount of time to take your political signs down. We can't do that anymore because it's the message, right? We can't control the message anymore. So do we just say when the purpose, and this is what I came up with with the last one, when the purpose has been fulfilled? Well, how do you know when the purpose has been fulfilled, right? We see a lot of signs still out there three years later, Biden, Pence, or Biden, whoever, Biden, Harris, or Trump, Pence, right? And it's the old one. And it doesn't have a year on it. So I just support those people, right? There's no purpose being fulfilled. I'm going to keep those up forever because I love them. What do we do with that? Apparently not much unless we, you know, can find another way to remove them because they've become dilapidated or they have too many. Do we make sure we prohibited off-premises signs? Obviously, we don't want anybody in their front yard typically advertising things not happening at their house. And then home occupation signs, that might already be covered under our home occupation regulations, but clearly, we don't want, you know, accountants or anybody else who works from home putting up a sign to say, hey, come on in here. This is my office now. Certainly, we see a lot more of that in car dealerships and firearm dealers, right? They all want to zone, they want the zoning to be approved so they can have their license associated with their home. That gets complicated because if the feds are looking for us or the state's looking for us to approve the zoning or to say it's appropriate zoning, it gets a little complicated because the feds don't care if we have restrictions. Like you can't let people shop at your house. You can't invite people to your house other than by appointment only and you can't create extra foot traffic. They don't care about any of that. They just want the city to say, do they have zoning approval to be there or don't they? Because if they don't, we're not going to give them their license. So that becomes challenging. But as far as the signage part goes, that's pretty easy. No home occupation signage is an easy rule to follow. Permanent freestanding signs is another category. Outside of residential now, we're just talking about the category of those kinds of signs, permanent and freestanding. Do we want to make a rule about no new billboards? I don't even know if we have a billboard inventory right now in our city. Do we want to limit height? Do we want to define what our base should look like? Do we have standards in mind for what we want our new signs that go in or our updated signs that go in to look like? Do we want a brick? Yes, right? Yes. Everybody in the community would say, yes, we want a brick base or a decorative base. We want it to be a certain height or a certain way. We want some sort of uniformity. We're not dictating the color or the style necessarily, but we want our signs to not be pole signs, right? From the old 1950s, right? We're modernizing the city and we want it to look that way. So how do we define the base requirements? What do we think those should be? Do we modify our rules for changeable copy area? Have they become antiquated? Do people need more? Do businesses expect more? Or are we going to keep sending them a zoning board to make sure they're all, you know, in good order and everybody's happy with making it bigger or smaller? Do we want to go smaller? Limits for non-residential uses in residential. So churches, for example, right? They're allowed to be in residential neighborhoods. Do we want to put limits on their permanent freestanding signs? Because they're in a residential district, even if they're a non-residential use. We probably also have some of that, I'm not sure what the zoning is on Utica Road, but don't we have salons and little houses that are businesses? Like that might be residentially zoned, but, but commercial in nature. I'm not sure. So another thing to consider. And then do we want to link square footage to street frontage with a maximum size? In other words, if residential properties are larger, should they be allowed to have? I'm sorry, not residential. If the commercial property that's having a permanent freestanding sign is a little bit bigger, should they be allowed to have a little bit more? Should we have a formula? Or should it be one size fits all and they come to zoning board if they want more? Or planning commission, you know, for CLU or some kind of site plan approval? And then wall signs, a whole nother category. Should we consider one additional wall sign for commercial uses if it's on a facade that you can't see from a public way? You know, we talk about what the definition of a sign is. I've always taken the position we should define sign to be something you can see from a public space. Like you're on a sidewalk, you're on a public road, and you can see it and you can kind of read it, right? Maybe not perfectly, but you can make it out. What if it's not visible from any of those spaces? What if it's the back end of an outlot in the Meyer parking lot? Should we be calling that a sign? Or should we say, no, that's, you can put whatever you want up on there because nobody from the public can see it other than your own parking lot? You know, maybe that should be a rule. Certainly worth talking about. All right, next one. So these are some definitions to consider that we should probably update. And this is more probably for me to do and then get comments back. But these are different categories that we should consider. Agricultural sales signs, directional signs, electronic message boards, festoons. You know, a lot of these we have in our ordinance already. We're not using, so should we use them more in our regulations? But yeah, you can, you can read through the list. It's pretty much a lot of things we talked about. Roof signs, you would think, who needs a roof sign? Well, we don't really regulate roof signage, so in theory, people could put signs on their roof for overhead, whatever is going by, drones, planes, helicopters, you name it. And then a couple of other categories from our current ordinance. Sign area would be a good thing to look at and how we're defining that again because that gets confusing even for me. Is sign area the space on which you put the message or is it the message, right? Because if it's just the message, can I have a big space around my message? And that gets, Randy's nodding again. It gets very tricky to try to figure out what is the sign? Is it the characters and the wording and the logos? Didn't we have, I think, wasn't it Healthmark that wanted to put the little globe on top of their sign? So the globe, right? You remember that case? The globe is signage, right? They had to come to the zoning board to get a variance to have more signage because of the globe, which is their little adornment on top of their sign. So these are the kinds of things that we should consider. You can see the definition there that I used in my other ordinance that I wrote. A sign is the use of any words, numerals, figures, devices, inflatable moving advertising products. Think about those giant inflatable, inflatable guys that their arms wave around. That's what I'm referring to there a little bit. Designs, logos, trademarks which direct attention to a product, place, or activity, person, institution, message, or business, or by which anything is made known to the general public and which is visible and discernible off the lot or from any public right-of-way. That's the definition I created, I like, but we can always tweak it to fit what we think it should be. And with that, I probably won't even have a voice left tomorrow because I don't ever talk this much at any given time. So I am here to talk about how we think as a team, we need to move this forward because it is such a big lift. It is such a big project and there are so many pieces to it. I know I'm asking the, you know, the moon to start talking about it tonight in a meaningful way, but if there are certain pet things that anybody wants to get started with or the chair, if you have any thoughts on a process by which we move forward? Do we solicit comments from each of you? Do we talk tonight more? I am at your disposal.
I just wanted to go backwards, like right, there's so many things.
I know.
But we got murals. We made a big deal with the mural on the back of Frazier Lanes. And it became a sign. I was looking at your definition going, where does murals fall? It's not, none of those, I don't think. So I mean, you could.
Painted, right? The mural's painted or is it on an art board that's attached?
It's just painted on.
And you saw, I mentioned painted walls.
And it was a, it was the high school kids doing it as a project. They made it a whole.
Sign, if it's visible. If we define it as something visible from right-of-way and it's actually visible, then it becomes a sign, right? So these are the things to think of. So in Sterling Heights, something creative they did, I wasn't part of, but it's a great idea. Sterling Heights decided to start reaching out to businesses to buy or lease wall space for a dollar from them so Sterling Heights could control the mural, right? Now you don't have to worry about the ordinance because Sterling, the business doesn't have to worry about following the rules. The city buys the right for a dollar and then could have the kids do it or can have the police find an artist to do police work. And it's a really creative idea. And I think City of Utica is looking at that too because they do a lot of public art. If you've ever driven over by Jimmy John's Field, they've got some freeway corridors and things, but they want to do more public artwork. And rather than let the public go nuts and have their way, to have control, you can't constitutionally control the message, but if it's the city's mural, the city can control the message, right? Great question.
Then you got your temporary signs and you, and you did short-term and long-term. What about long-term, short-terms? We had, you know, a guy with a garage sale every weekend. A whole summer long and into the things. And he'd always have office supplies.
That is a problem in many communities because the question is, is it truly a garage sale or is it a business? Right? Right? What is it now when it's happening every weekend and there's all these new products and soaps for sale and other things that they make or buy from China? And, you know, what is it anymore?
It's like.
That's, that's a whole nother ordinance. That's a garage sale ordinance.
So I mean, there's so many things you can go off that. You can write a book on just have, your ordinance could be a thick book by the time you answered every possible objection. You got those people that'll go and just put one up to be a rebel and just be, and then, well, I spent all this money now and you're going to tell me I can't and I got to throw this thing out? You know, there's just so much.
And I didn't want to be, it was a challenge to try to come up with something to put in front of you because I don't yet know what we want, right? I can put something in front of you. I can take what I've done. I can take what the planners have done. We can put it together in one and make it beautiful. But I don't know if it's what, you know, feedback you're going to, you know, I give you that and then you guys tear it apart because it wasn't on the same page that you're all thinking or maybe you love it and it's great, we've been efficient, we got it done. But I didn't want to do that for tonight because I just found myself sitting through it, looking through it, going through it, thinking, I have so many questions that I think they're going to have. Let's talk about the questions first. Even if we don't answer all of them, at least I get some direction. That's, that's what my goal was. I hope I'm, I hope I'm on the same page. I know.
Another thing is times change and you get those skeleton ones and that's the big thing. And then all of a sudden, somebody will come up with something else because it's advertising. It's a way for Home Depot to make more money. There will always be some, and then future changes. What about, we had neon lighting? And, and all of a sudden, well, they switched instead of neon lighting now. They put the continuous rope lighting all the way around and you can't call it neon lighting anymore. And the ordinance says neon lighting for that. So it's, oh my gosh.
Future, by the way, the future will be holograms, right?
Oh, yeah.
How do we regulate hologram? Turn it on and turn it off. So the code goes out, just click it off until they're gone, right?
Commissioner Farina.
Yeah. We, we did a lot of research a number of years ago. And by the way, I'm going to ask Alicia, and this is an action item, Alicia. I want my copy that I gave to Herbal of the sign ordinance back because we looked at what we wanted in all the signs and we wanted to go toward monument signs as being a classier way and to go away from the pole signs. And we wanted to look at the length of time and a review of how long the sign has been up there. After 10 years, they had to, had to resubmit. And, and somebody had to go out and look at it and say, yes, it's in good repair or you got to repair it to get approved, you know, to keep our city looking relatively, you know, good and vibrant. So, and I appreciate what you did, Don, but for us to sit down and say this, what their planners, McKenna's planner came up with and what we have, I'd like to see a bump. And then from there, you know, here is how they line up. And then we can say, here is, using those two, here is what we think it should say and use your guidance and the planner's guidance. And maybe Alicia Hughes could sit down and say, hey, here's what we recommend out of these two, you know? And then go down. Is that, is that a thing forward or is that doable?
It's something I wanted to do for today. I just didn't have the time with trying to just get all this material done. But I love the idea of columns where here's what's on the books. Here's what the planners have used in the past or have put together. Here's what I've used in the past or put together or passes legal muster. And if I don't have anything, I can say if it does or doesn't pass legal muster for theirs or what we currently have. And then all the three, all of the seven of you have to do is kind of look at the three columns and say, you know, I kind of like this concept better than what we have now, but I'm not so sure about legals. And we could kind of go through the whole thing and start making little checkboxes and put an ordinance together.
Use experience too from other cities.
Absolutely.
This isn't the first time. This is every city has to go through this stuff. If you got somebody who really works good, it's no difference. Okay, we're four square miles. Townships are all 36 square miles. Big difference, trying to enforce it even, but it was hard to enforce four square miles. Think about 36 square miles and enforcing.
I'll tell you, they're not enforcing four square miles. So kid, do you want to set up a schedule of some kind with the planners and say, we will tackle for next month, we will tackle one section. However, it's, you know, and then set up some kind of calendar like we did for the five-year plan? We'll do this and this, you know? I mean, you know, you guys come up with what you think would be a good calendar and present it to us.
I like the idea a lot of breaking this up because it is so much that I threw at you tonight. The question becomes how to categorize a lot of that because there're going to be, there's going to be overlap. So we can, we can try. You know, we can talk about districts versus signs and then we can talk about signs themselves, right? We can, we can break it up and see what we can do with that. But there may be some overlap that gets a little confusing, but we'll make, we'll make it work.
I'm going to offer one idea is to maybe create a subcommittee instead of talking to all nine. Do we have nine of us or seven?
We're down to seven, aren't we?
Yeah, seven. And.
Well, with you two.
You know, just a little bit of the feel from the planning commission, one or two planning commissioners. It's just an idea. It's a lot to take in. So what's our, what's our attack? What's our attack mode here? Think about it, come back.
I've been pushing for this for 20 years now.
I know you have. I know you have. It's you, Mr. Darnall, that if we do have a subcommittee, it's you that we're working with and Alicia.
Yep.
How does any of the other members feel? What's the best way to move forward with the sign ordinance? Big job. Big job.
How do you coordinate this with the United States Supreme Court? Free speech.
What do you mean coordinate? That's kind of my job is to make sure we don't run afoul.
What I'm saying, you know, we also have the Constitution. And then don't we have to be careful that we're not violating that?
Of course, yeah. That's, that's the whole point of this exercise, I think, is to make sure everything we currently have doesn't run afoul and make sure we don't put anything new in there that says things like thou shalt not use bad language, right? We can't do that anymore, so.
So bad language is okay?
Bad language, unfortunately, bad language is okay when your children are watching or grandchildren, so yes. It's unfortunate, but it is allowed nowadays. Times have changed.
Thoughts, comments?
What's everybody looking at me for?
We're just looking at that sun tan. We're just looking at that side, suntan.
It's like, whoa!
One thing that, one thing that I was thinking about was people that try to sell vehicles. I have a home in my area that is not in the city of Frazier, it's in Roseville, and it's on 13 Mile, and this particular person, right now, he has a boat in the front of his house, and behind his, like, at the rear of his property, he must have six or eight vehicles, they're older vehicles, and he has a section of asphalt to the front, and it's near, I can tell you where it is, it's next to, I call it St. Anthony's, it's St. Petero Petracchina, and this particular person, right now, has a boat, a very large sailboat parked in front with a for sale sign, but this person rotates these vehicles.
Not his. It's, it's because of his location, all his buddies say, can I put this there?
Precisely.
You know, that's the biggest problem.
But it's like a used car slash boat, and I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's one thing if you're selling a vehicle and it's at the bottom of your drive for, you know, a week or two, but this person has, has this constantly, and it's like, oh, the boat's not there, oh, they've moved the boat to the back, now they're trying the 55 Chevy Bel Air, or they're trying to sell the 68 Cougar, whatever. It was, and I think that's an issue that we might want to look at, too.
Let me tell you, I can tell you story after story about that, especially in, as we see more and more, I mentioned earlier, the people that want the car dealer license to be at their house, right? So, under Michigan law, I believe you can sell, I want to say it's six cars a year before you have to get a license to be a dealer. So, a lot of what we're seeing moving to the suburbs is coming out of the Detroit used car lots, they will bring the cars home, because it's more affordable than having property or a business in the city. And they will sell them, as you pointed out, rotate the stock, so to speak, and sell them from their home property. It's really less of a sign ordinance issue and more of a code issue, but let me tell you the challenges. When they get wise to us, they park them backwards, so you can't see the plate, they park them deep into the property, so you can't necessarily intrude or trespass to go get the plate. The code people are typically limited to making sure it's operable, and it can be, you know, it's workable and it's a registered vehicle, but if they can't see the plate, they can't figure out if it's registered, so best they can make a guess as to whether it works or whether it's junk. It is an incredible challenge right now, more and more, as people start to use their homes for all kinds of creative endeavors, but that's just one great example of people getting-
Saying you got a document, we hadn't done one on 14 Mile here, same way, it was, the guy was selling a new one every, whenever he got rid of the one, he'd put another one out, and then code enforcement's got to sit there documenting exactly, they'd back it in, you can't even see the license plate, and, and he can't go up there, and there's so many limits, and it's tough.
The Constitution keeps getting in the way again.
Yeah.
Yep.
Man.
But it does, it gets in the way, and it makes it very challenging, and I have been dealing with that issue, that very issue, probably most of my career. It's just gotten worse over time, as more people have gotten the idea. But I remember a case, you know, a house way back in the day, same idea, they were, they were trying to sell used, too many used cars in a given year without being a dealer, and the city having to try to do something about it, so it's, it's not going away, the question is, how can we make it less appealing?
And that was a state code with, called their car, called a dealership. So they don't have to be a dealer, but we call them a dealership, just because they've sold five within a year.
Right. Once you do that, you can start to deal with them through the state, which is helpful, if you can catch them.
Yeah.
Okay, members, um, are we, maybe we can do it by a show of hands, are we comfortable with Mr. Darnall working with the city planner to come up with columns?
I like the idea of the columns like that.
Do we want any assistance from the planning commissioners to get their input? Show of hands, yes, no? It's-
Well, in the end, it's going to come through us.
It's going to come, yeah.
Okay.
Whether, I think, it's hard enough getting people together for a group thing like that.
Okay.
If you can limit it to the two at first, and then start coming off from that, and maybe, or have one representative like Frank or something, just to keep the numbers down. The more you get, the harder it ends up.
I know, you're going to get so many ideas from everyone, so, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we talked about a format, and now we need a schedule, okay? How are we going to bite the, you know, eat the apple, you know? And then, from there, just let's start out and do one section at a time and go on from there.
Okay. Sound good, Mr. Darnall?
Sounds good to me. Are you comfortable having one at every meeting, even if you don't have business to do? Is that a good, is that a good plan? Or would you rather it be when you have business, you get a piece of the ordinance to work on?
How does business look, Ms. Warren?
Um, we have something in August.
Good.
Just to far out.
Okay. Personally, I say go ahead, get this ordinance going, so, yeah, I would say, even if we don't have business, to put a section on an agenda.
And to Frank's point, you know, we have a big, big, big election in 2024, so it would be nice, for my, just for me alone, but I'm sure you all agree, to have something really done before, you know, city clerk or code have to start dealing with things, right?
Oh, yeah.
I agree with that.
I would-
The clerk always said, right at election time, I need every code enforcement person to be out there.
If we can break it into enough pieces, but get us, so we're not taking a year to do it, I think that's the way to go.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, members, no?
Sounds good.
You got a plan of action?
You got to start somewhere.
So, we're going to see that as an action item in the minutes for the next meeting. Come back with a plan and a schedule.
Right, okay.
Um, I have a comment. I know that when this started, we mentioned doing a meeting with zoning board as well. Would that be at the end of you guys going through every section? Do we include them?
With the ZBA, is that what you said?
Yes.
I was wondering what the role of the ZBA, because they would have a lot of input, I would think.
No. But-
But no role?
I know it was discussed, you know, brought up.
We're going to have a meeting on the 20th, and Don, if you could come and give this briefing at the ZBA meeting.
That's this Thursday.
Trying to think if I have a commitment or not, that day sounds familiar for some reason, I'd have to look.
It's my children's birthday, that's what-
That's why it sounds so familiar, I have a party to attend.
Yeah.
And if you could, that would be helpful, you know?
I suppose, at what point do, if you want to include comments from them, input, I don't know.
I would think so.
For this, for right now, rather than a briefing, would it help to just circulate the PowerPoint to everybody?
Yeah.
Like, just email the actual-
Take a peek, and let them know what our action is. That would be-
If they, it'd be good, they can watch this if it's online.
They'll get to watch the whole presentation on their own.
Yeah.
So who's going to email that out to the?
Yeah, I can take care of it.
Oh, the PowerPoint? I'll take care of the PowerPoint.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
It's on my system.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Okay, let the record reflect, we still do not have anybody here for our site plan review, let's address that now, and we can, I would suggest postponing the item.
Yes.
Right? So let's go to Agenda 6B, site plan review for 2302-31401, gross spec Popeye's site plan amendment. Let's make it clear by Ms. Warren that the applicant, you expected the applicant here this evening, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's entertain a motion to postpone the item to the, do we need a date of the meeting to postpone it, Mr. Darnall?
Typically, we postpone to a date certain.
Okay, so that would be the August 2nd meeting? Have a motion on that?
I'll move. Action on site plan 23-02-31401, gross spec Popeye's site plan till August 2nd meeting, where the applicant should be available.
Okay, and support, please?
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Kyle to postpone the Popeye's site plan amendment to the August 2nd meeting. You have a roll call, Ms. Greenia, please?
Mr. Barr?
Uh, yes.
Chair Zer.
Yes.
Mr. Farina?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yep.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried unanimously. Go to Agenda Item Number 7, unfinished business, 7A, where we will discuss the memorandum, authority to waive landscaping requirements. Would you like to address that, Mr. Darnall, please?
I didn't come prepared to, but you do all have, before you, a memorandum that was written by my colleague Clark Andrews, and I have reviewed and gone through with him. I didn't bring a printout of that with me, but if anybody has anything specific-
Would you like a printout?
Oh, well, Cindy's got one for me, how about that? What he basically put together for you, and I know it's a long document to go through, but most of that is just verbatim from your ordinances, and then in bold, he kind of gave, drew your attention or your eyes to the things that planning commission deals with when it comes to landscaping, screening, those kinds of requirements. So if you have any specific questions about that, but-
I'm not sure this addressed, to me personally, I'm not sure it helped me out with our question of the June meeting. It was the Dairy Queen application, and it was required landscaping for the Dairy Queen on gross spec, and planning commissioners felt that there was no place to put any of the landscaping, it was going to be in the right-of-way of the county road.
Okay.
That was the question, so if you can help me to understand what we would do with Dairy Queen, if we had the right to say, the, to, the applicant can be, can waive the landscape requirement, and what rule would that be, I guess, what regulation?
So if you look at, if you look at page five, at the very bottom of the, they don't have page numbers on them, but it's the fifth page, at the very bottom, in consideration of requests to waive wall or greenbelt requirements between any districts or existing use, I mean, that might not be exactly what we're looking for here, but zoning board of appeals is supposed to refer that to you for recommendation, and then they would do the actual variance on that. Uh, I don't know if there's anything more specific on screening waivers in the ordinance, because this is everything.
So that would be it, then? We would, basically, if we wanted to, we would make a resolution to forward it to the ZBA.
That's my, that was my feeling on it when I went through this with Clark, was that is a, that's an actual variance, that's not just a planning commission site and, okay, you can't do it, so we'll waive it, kind of thing, that's more of a-
It's more of a variance, right?
A variance to not have it, and then once you've got approval to not have it, then you come to planning commission to finalize out-
Then it comes back to us.
What your site's going to look like, yeah, without it.
Okay. That helps me out. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Or you could say, like, with the Dairy Queen site, there's no room for landscaping, but can we approve that if they can't put it on the gross spec side, that they could, and they need three trees, let's say, that they could put it on the east side of the property? If they can't put it from the frontage, because-
Can they put it in another location?
Can they put it in another location? Can they get, now, I don't know that they could even put as many trees, I think when we spoke the last time, there were seven trees that they needed to put in, could they put in three in lieu of seven? And if so, could we say, okay, you can't put it along gross spec, let's say?
If you put it in planters instead of in the ground.
Right, right.
And we're all paved surfaces, I mean, it's a, it's a state highway, right-of-way, there's really no greenbelt there, and so you're dealing with, what are the state's regulations there? Well, they're not, they don't even supply a greenbelt to put anything, so wait back to the planners or something. Can we say, hey, in lieu of that, can we put planners by the, in front of the building to give it a landscaping effect?
That's interesting, because that whole site has just been renewed, there's no planning thing or front of those.
Yeah, you're right. And it's-
So, why didn't the planner catch that?
Mr. Darnall's taking notes, right?
I am, I think it's an interesting question, that the site, the site as developed, right? This is not, we're not talking about vacant property, this is the site as developed can't accommodate our rules for landscaping, right, on the site? And then what do we do about that? It's a, it's a, it's a good question, because it's not really a hardship or practical difficulty created by the property, because the property was developed with that hardship, but what is the request specifically before you? I guess I haven't looked at the case, is it a redevelopment of a building, or an addition, a new use in a building?
Was the Dairy Queen coming in?
The applicant wasn't sure what he was doing, and there was going to be a meeting-
It's supposed to be, yeah.
With the applicant in the building.
Oh, we're talking about the vacant Dairy Queen.
Yes.
I was getting the sense that there's another one coming, like, really, we're getting a new Dairy Queen?
Yeah.
No, we are talking about the Dairy-
You're talking about that property, yes.
Yes.
That property is a whole nother can of worms. So the answer to, I'm not sure what the question exactly is that I'm answering, but the, I'll give you a little history, so that property was purchased with an agreement to redevelop it, and it's up to the applicant to figure out, or the owner to figure out, how? And he did get a site plan approval from this body back in, I want to say, 15, and then did, and he got a variance, too, for parking, and did nothing with any of it.
Right.
And so now we're kind of chasing that and trying to get something done finally after all this time. If the question is lands, I'm not sure what our landscaping requirements, obviously, it's a redevelopment, right? So we, our landscaping applies, it's not like he's just already a Dairy Queen, and we're telling him to put trees up, it's, when you redevelop, your site plan has to show landscaping on it. And so the question is, if he can't do it, where does it go? I like, I've, I've seen that done before, where we, we require it in a different place, you could do, in his case, you can't, because the site's too small, but you could do, like, landscaping islands, or, you know, traffic parking islands, you can't do it here, but are there ways that you could accomplish it? I'm not sure planters would work, because those are too portable, I would think, right? Unless they're really, like, like garden boxes of some kind-
Right against the building.
Somehow put, put in. Yeah, I'll have to look at that closer, but I think, I think there's always a way, I just don't know if it's planning commission or zoning board that would come up with the way. Probably, they get a variance to have some flexibility, and then planning commission tells them what the site plan should look like, that's what I'm thinking it's going to be, is going to be the answer.
Okay.
Well, just so you know, if you didn't know before, the site plan was the original site plan he brought back.
I know. It's disappointing. But, that being said, if you grant it or approve it, let's get that moving, right? He needs to get it moving.
All right, we'll go to Agenda Item 7B, issues. Okay.
When Popeyes comes up again for us, I'm going to ask that this, have you sent that to Public Safety to look at that?
Yes.
Okay. It hasn't been for the last few that we've gone.
Yeah, that one was sent.
Okay, thank you.
7B, issues on previous actions, and that is for you, Mr. Commissioner Farina.
Two meetings ago, we asked, I asked, in this thing about the hole on Utica Road, that I'm getting questions about the hole on Utica Road, and what's being done there, and somebody was supposed to come back with an answer. And that's, then I started looking back at a bunch of questions that we asked, that nobody comes back with an answer for at our next meeting. So I want, and I talked with Cynthia about this, I want something, these are the action items, and who's going to do the action items, and who, they're going to come back and talk to us the next time, because it's, it's like big boys, okay? I am thoroughly convinced that if I hadn't dogged big boys, that would go sail through, and they'd be in that place running it, and they haven't met the requirements at all. And so I want some follow-up by the city and the city planners on, and, and the building department on these questions that we're asking, or what's the use of us being here? I mean, you know, so, that's my point. So I'd like that added to the agenda every time.
Like, follow-up on the action items?
Yes.
That we-
Yes.
We should make clear to the administration what the action items are.
Well, that's why I tried to say, next time, we're going to have a schedule and a plan, you know? You know? And who's going to come up with that plan? You know, the planner and the attorneys are going to come forward with it, schedule and plan going forward, okay? And the one on Utica Road, do we know what happened, what's happening there?
You're talking about the hole?
Yeah.
Um, I do believe I mentioned, last time, that code enforcement was out there, and there was an open enforcement on it, that is, as far as I know. I don't know if, now it has been a month. So I will have to look to see if they had gone back out. But I do know shortly after that meeting, there was a code enforcement open on it, and there was a site visit on it. So usually, he, he goes back out two, three times before something gets issued, a court visit or something. So I'll have to look into, to see if there has been further action on it.
Is this the right place for that? Should it be in the ZBA? Because I, the plant, the Building Department used to sit in on our ZBA meetings, okay? Now McKenna was the head of the planning of the Building Department. Now McKenna is no longer the head of the Building Department. I'm crossing ground here, because I'm, I'm the head of the ZBA now, okay? Should the Building Department come to our ZBA meeting? And I don't know the answer. The city manager will have to answer that question. So...
What hole is on Utica?
That house that was taken down?
Oh.
Okay. That hole is still there. I mean, they got a little fence around it.
Yeah, it's got fencing, so, yeah.
Some kids got to follow that hole, yeah.
Do you have any other action items that you're thinking of, Commissioner Farina, at this time?
Not from this meeting.
Okay. I'd try to do a running list. I ran out of my running list. Go ahead, Ms. Greenia. That we're discussing now?
Yes.
7B.
But on future agendas.
Oh, on future agendas.
One I've always reflected, add to Site Plan 7A. Action items from previous...
It's already 7 unfinished business. I think the question for me is, and for Cindy, is what, as a board, do you want specifically captured on here until you're done with it? Like, maybe every time you do site plans or you do special approval and uses, if that's something you want to see happening, you know, get updates on every month, maybe that's the better way to go, because then it could be a topic until you say, as a board, we're good, we're done, we don't need to hear anymore.
I, we, I asked that it be updated in the monthly report that these, Clark, that he puts an update into the monthly report every month about specifically Big Boys. And...
It was all items, yeah.
I don't know where we stand with Big Boys now. I mean, there's one that's open. I'd like to hear an update on Big Boys every time.
Mr. Littman created a list, if, and I don't know if you can step in, Alicia, and incorporate that, too. It's very helpful, getting it once a month.
The monthly reports?
Yes.
I have curated those and given them to Mr. Littman, so, yes, I can include them.
That was helpful. I think that was very, very helpful.
Yeah, and if we can do anything to help, obviously, if, you know, if they have a list, they need some legal update, because we might be communicating with a lawyer, we might be communicating with somebody. We're pretty good, I think, about, you know, going back and forth and keeping everybody in the loop. But if there's anything we can add to it or help with, we can certainly do that.
Somebody asked, I thought the thing was Randy at the last meeting, about the, I'm not sure, was you, the gravel enclosure that was supposed to be put in, and it hadn't been put in?
Oh, are you talking about taking, once we approve something or grant something, you're talking about going back and saying, hey, did they do it the way according, we approved it? That's...
Problem is, we're not an enforcement board.
No, it is, unless we do it...
That's the Building Department, yeah.
That's, somebody follows up on all those things, not us.
Yeah, not us, yeah.
We do our job of a plan and approving a plan, and then from that point on, it's somebody else's problem.
It's human nature to want to know what happened to the things we decide, but Planning Commissions and zoning boards in every community are not really accustomed to hearing how their work came to fruition...
Correct.
...with updates. Or, you know, it just doesn't happen in any community. So it's, it's a challenging thing to ask, because it would have to be in, like, we're talking about some kind of, almost some kind of report, that somebody would have to consciously sit down and write, rather than just dealing with it in the moment, right? Just dealing with it as it's moving forward. And then if we do have a problem, we come to you for revocation of it. That's, that's when you'll know there's a problem, because we come to you and say, we need you to have a public hearing and tell these people it's revoked. But if we don't have that kind of problem, it never comes to you.
And I'm sure the administration's going to be very helpful. If we see something, we walk in to the administration and say, hey, you know, what's up with this? What's the status? So, go ahead, Ms. Warren.
Mr. Farina, you're talking about the property on Klein? The gravel?
Yes.
Okay. I did see something just before this meeting. Haley from his office resented, I think it was Haley, maybe Alyssa, resented an email to them, so I'm assuming they have not heard from, that was a second email. But that is, I want to at least give you that update, because I did see that just before I came in today.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Farina?
I guess my, used to be rock solid on follow-up. I don't think there's follow-up. And I'm not afraid to say it to the city manager or to McKenna. I just don't think there's adequate follow-up on what's supposed to be happening now as a citizen, not as a member of the Planning Commission as a citizen. So...
Any further comments? Agenda Item 8, Public Communication on Non-Agenda Items. There are none. Agenda Item 9, Zoning Board of Appeals Member Liaison Report. Commissioner Farina?
Yes, we did have a meeting. Yay! And Myers came in for, they are redoing the store on 15 Mile Road. If you go there, you probably got an email today showing you what the inside of the store is going to look like. And they asked for some changes that they're doing corporate-wide, where the, on one side, it'll say home, and the other side, it'll say grocery or something like that, you know? I'm not sure of the words, no. But that was one of the things they wanted to do, signs to do that. And the planner did do an analysis, said that it does not hurt anything else in the city, because we only have one 250,000-square-foot stopping center in the city, so this doesn't set precedence for other areas, okay? They also asked for an additional sign on the, the gas station to say that this is Frazier Myers, and we also granted that variance, because it also said, this is fast, I don't remember the words, quick pickup, or something like that. And it, you know, we, we granted that based on people who have handicaps. It would be easier for them to go to someplace quick... Curbside. Walk through, yes, to go through the Myers and have to go through the entire store. And that's also the reason we granted the variance for home and grocery, because, you know, people who have disability, you know, don't need to walk the whole way through to see all this stuff.
So you're talking about parking spaces with the quick pickup? Is that what you're referring to?
No, there's a sign that says, quick. Quick, hold on. Home on the facade and 69 square feet that says Fresh. So it's going to say Home and Fresh on this front of the building. And then M Express is, is what's going to be on the, on the gas station. So for people who are just looking for fast things to go into, you know, like, an old person just wants to go and buy some milk, they don't have to run through the entire, entire thing. We are also going to have a meeting this month, on the 20th, where a variance is being asked for 17-157 Anita. It's a, it's a setback variance. They want to build something in the setback. I'm going to ask if Public Safety has seen that also. So that's all, we did get a new member, and they will be starting. So that means we're still one member down, okay? So, you know, if you know of anybody who wants to be on the zoning board, who feels the calling to give people the right to break the law?
Was the new member at your last meeting, or?
Yeah, he, we interviewed him at the last meeting and recommended him to City Council. Was that on the last agenda? Just got approved.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, there's other news.
Oh, there's...
Because you said now you are the head, so there are, is there other news with the ZBA?
Oh.
Are you chair?
Yeah.
Okay. Your chair, who's vice chair?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of stunned, because everybody didn't want the jobs.
Oh, Mr. Lessig, maybe?
Yes, it is Mr. Lessig who...
Your chair, Mr. Lessig, is vice chair.
Vice chair, and Menendez is the secretary.
Okay. And your next meeting is your regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
No, it's on the 20th of this month.
Okay. Any questions of Commissioner Farina? Agenda Item 10, Commissioners' Comments and Items of Interest and Concern. Ms. Meyer, do you have any comments?
I was just curious on what is happening with the piece of property that used to be the old Little Caesar's Pizza on 13. It's just west of Boucheneys. I saw that there's some concrete work for the approach. Is that, did they get their agreements? Do you know which property I mean? It's, um...
The strip center right there?
Strip center, yes.
Used to be Massimino's.
Massimino's.
Yes, yes, yes. That was at the east end, and Little Caesar's was at, Little Caesar's Pizza was at the west end. I was just curious. I see some work going on there, so I was just...
I'll have to look into that one. I'm not sure. It doesn't ring a bell.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that it's not being worked on.
He was here, I don't know, it was probably a year ago.
We're talking about that retail center that was dilapidated.
I mean, what he wanted to do was approved, but he just never started it. Well, he started a little bit of it, and then he stopped.
Right.
And, but he did get new pavement in there.
Yeah.
But there was supposed to be a cross parking agreement registered there also, and I don't know what's happened with that.
Well, it was very apparent that it was going to be a challenge with the parking, and it's going to be a challenge to get tenants with the parking that he had. So that was going to be the challenge. That's probably why it just sat there. An action item, right? That's an action item. Thank you. Anything else?
And the parking agreement, Don, is your action item?
It would be, and that's not one I've, I remember seeing anytime recently, so...
Commissioner, you and Meyer, anything else?
Well, there was, talking about Dairy Queen, they were supposed to come back before us, or we were to find out whether or not they, a meeting was set up between the planner and the building official? Was, is there some news on that?
I can give a little update. I wasn't in that meeting. I did reach out to Andrew. He did meet with him. He sat down, I think, that following week that he was in here. He said most of the conversation was about litigation and what he can do with the city. I don't believe his plan is to come back at this time.
So we have that item, though, that we, if it's not, if he's not going to do anything further, we should handle that item?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that can be, how that is handled.
We would probably have it withdrawn, but, yeah, we should probably check with the attorney to see how that hand, that item should be handled.
Yeah, if a motion has to be made on that.
Yeah, yes.
If it's of any value to any of you, Mr. Fiori came to the City Council meeting last week...
Okay.
...and expressed himself, so that's worth watching.
On that item?
It's worth watching.
Okay. Okay.
He had some things to say. I have communicated since that night with his lawyer and have not heard back, so I imagine, I would hope, they're having conversations about the best approach, but...
Okay.
...that's not for me to say.
Was, was Mr. Logan in that meeting? Do you know, Ms. Warren?
I can find out. I, Ms. Logan has been on vacation every time I'm in the office, so I haven't seen him in weeks.
That's fine.
Um...
I just wondered, because it wasn't going to be set up?
Yeah, it was, I do believe it was supposed to be the, both of them. It happened on a day I wasn't in office. But I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like it'd be best to keep it on, because I would think it's not up to us to cancel it, or...
Right, yeah.
Or even the attorney, it's all...
We need to hear from the applicant, how he wants it. Anything else? Nope. Commissioner Perry?
None at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Farina?
I've said enough.
Commissioner Kyle?
Just that, our next meeting, August, I will be on vacation.
Lucky you, good. Thank you for letting us know. Commissioner Warrenick?
Just, I'm getting to, um, I lost it all of a sudden. But, Don, what I was thinking of, because of the boards, and we're always having problems getting members on the board and all that, and I know election's coming up, and some board members might run for office. Can they be on the board until a certain time, or if they get that position? Or how does that, what's the formal stance on that?
Yeah, they can, they can serve until they're sworn in as a city councilperson, and then I would have to check. I believe they, there might be an allowance for one councilperson to serve on planning or zoning or both. I haven't looked at that in a long time, so I'd have to check and see if, if they automatically are lost from the board, or if they're allowed to continue serving, or, or if the new council has to appoint them, now that they're a member of council, there might be a protocol for that. So I'd have to look into that. I don't know the answer for sure.
Just curious.
But to your point, we, yeah, it's possible, members could be lost if they run for something and succeed.
And what was the other thing? Oh, I'm just surprised Frank didn't mention St. Malakie's Festival, so that is coming up. Well, we'd be, no, we still got an August meeting, right? Before it, okay. And I'm not saying anything. That's it.
Commissioner Barr, you have any comments?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, Ms. Greenia, any comments? You're welcome. Ms. Warren, any comments?
I do want to say, apologize to Mr. Farina if you think you're not have, if, your communication with us has been lacking. I try my best when I'm here and what I know. Sometimes there's somebody else here, and I don't get all the information. So I am a lone soldier now, but unfortunately, next month, I will be on maternity leave, so you're going to have another lone soldier coming in. Lauren will be taking my spot while I'm gone. You will meet her at next month's meeting. She will be the one presenting.
So Andrew's gone?
Correct.
Is Mr. Andrews, Mr. Littman still with McKenna?
Yes.
Okay.
Just not with Frazier.
Okay. Can you give us Lauren's last name?
It's S.A.Y.R.E. I think it's pronounced Sayari. I have to get that. But I will introduce you. I will try to come to the meeting next month, but I gave her the review to do, so she can, you guys can meet her.